I'm going to call this meeting to order on July 14th, 2020. What a year. We're living in the future. This is something to get used to, but good to see you all again in person. We've been doing these meetings virtually for about two months, I think now. So it's good to see you guys and thanks you all for coming tonight. I'm going to get started by asking the city clerk to call roll, please.
Commissioner Abraham?
Present.
Commissioner McElroy?
Present.
Commissioner Watkins?
Present.
Commissioner Wilson?
Present.
Mayor Harless?
Present.
And Commissioner McElroy, would you lead us in the invocation tonight, please? I guess we were standing when we were...
We didn't stand, yes. Our dear heavenly Father, we thank you for being our great and sovereign God and Savior. And Father, as you know, we've been through difficult days, but it is good to be together again. You made us for community and we're thankful for that. We're thankful for one another. We pray tonight as we work through the city's business that we will be wise, that you will grant us discernment, compassion, humility, love for one another, and help us, Father, as Osama said, "Let the favor of the Lord be upon us and establish the work of our hands." Yes, establish the work of our hands. We ask this in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. Commissioner Abraham, you want to lead us in the pledge?
We can skip the countdown. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to its republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Much better.
Much better.
Much better. City manager, are there any additions or deletions to the agenda tonight?
No, Madam Mayor.
Thank you very much. And we have several presentations tonight. First off, we're going to hear from Mr. Jim Dudley with the McCracken County Sports Commission to give us an update on their activity. I think he's out in the hall. There he comes. You can, yes.
Oh, that's better. So, well, good evening. Good to see everybody. Finally be back and people, see people again. It's good. So we've, like you guys, been meeting our usual meetings and sometimes some extra ones, but virtually. We haven't yet been able to come back in person yet. We're hoping to do that very soon. Sports Commission's been rocking and rolling, though. We just finalized the, everything with the Convention Center. We've got four courts going in there, which will allow for four basketball games or eight volleyball. We just finalized the bid for some goals and netting, some volleyball equipment they needed to finalize that. She's already got some stuff lined up starting the end of August, so those courts should be delivered mid-August. So we're excited about that. I think there's a pretty big volleyball tournament scheduled in September, maybe. So hopefully this COVID stuff will allow that to happen. We know any of the tourism here, so I think Chris told me today there's 30-something teams for that volleyball tournament, and about half of them are from out of town. So that'd be a great start. That'd really benefit this community and really help the Sports Commission get a good kickoff. As far as, you know, the big project, the outdoor project, we're still working on that. Next Wednesday is really going to be a big step for us. We're going to have a pretty long meeting, executive session to start finalizing potential site, what we're building, what sports we're going to focus on to really give our developers, PFGW and his team, kind of a vision of where we want to go with it. So we're excited about that. They've been doing a great job getting us all kinds of information, showing us potential designs and preliminaries of what it could look like. So we're excited about that and, you know, it just, it kind of gets busy. So we're excited for next week. We don't know where, again, we don't know where it's going to go. We may end up yelling at each other a little bit by the time we get to the end of it, but at the end of the day, we're going to have a great meeting, have an idea of what we want and what the future holds from McCracken County. And, you know, it's a huge industry. It really is. So we're excited about that and the potential it brings. So there's a quick rundown. What questions can I answer for you guys?
Have you made a firm decision? I think I know, but just on exactly what all sports you're going to be overseeing and developing facilities for what all sports?
We haven't yet. So obviously indoor, we're focusing on basketball, volleyball, but we're leaving that up to Convention Center to decide what to do there. Ultimately, our main core value is heads and beds, because that's what's going to fund these projects, is how do we get tourism here? As far as outdoor, Pinnacle Report came back, suggested, or suggested volleyball, not volleyball, softball, baseball, and soccer are the three main ones. But kind of like we discussed, we don't want to leave anything out that may not be here. You know, lacrosse is something that's growing very fast around the nation. Just because we don't have it here doesn't mean we don't want to be able to have potential lacrosse tournaments down the road. So we're going to take all that into consideration. Obviously, design, money, all that's going to be a big part of that. But we're going to do our best to be able to kind of have different types of tournaments. And we'd love to be able to have potentially, you know, something at an outdoor facility and something at the Convention Center all the same weekend and really maximize that sports tourism.
Do you know yet quite how much impact you're going to have on transient room tax? Have you guys got any reports on that yet?
No, because we don't know what we're building yet. So I mean, you know, volleyball, basketball, they may have a little bit of numbers off that because potential, but with COVID, we just don't know what that looks like yet.
Yeah, that's what I was referring to, if you know how that hit is going to...
You know, I guess right now there, I don't know where that falls under, that's kind of that gray area. Is it 50 or less people or is it half capacity of the Convention Center? Where does that fall as far as having events and tournaments? And I don't know that they know that answer yet. So no, not really, unfortunately. I mean, we know with the Quilp Show being canceled that we need to be able to bring in some tourism. So if everything allows it, that's our goal. You know, let's have some tourism here on the weekends and get some, that transient room tax increase for everybody.
We learned, I think it was our last meeting, we had Mark Thompson tell us kind of what the state was suggesting about the sports associations. And so it seems like a lot of the affiliated kind of professional organizations are giving guidance on high school sports, like high school basketball and things like that. I'm assuming the same thing is happening in the tourism industry. They're trying to figure out, is there a way to do these things safely? And what guidelines about that look like?
Yeah, and Kentucky is a lot different. I mean, if you travel outside of Kentucky, there seems to be no guidelines for outdoor sports. You know, you go to Tennessee, Missouri, and those ball fields are packed every weekend. And, you know, all the way down south, I mean, it's just that you would think there's no pandemic going on, but that's how they want to handle it. So we're at the discretion of, you know, Kentucky, our governor, and some of that even falls under KHSSA, is that right?
That's what I was thinking of, yeah.
So, you know, like a lot of the volleyball is coming through the high school volleyball program and Coach Whitus. So again, he's kind of, he's got to go by those restrictions and what they say we can and can't do. You know, we got good news last week that they're planning on still having fall sports and having a fall season. So let's just, you know, pray that keeps going and we can get through that.
A follow-up to that, and I'll let somebody else ask you a question. I know you've been really involved with the Lone Oak Ball Field, and I know they're playing, right?
Correct. So we put out guidelines before they ever started that Judge Clymer and the county approved. So we've got it set up at the ballpark. You come out there, we don't allow anybody on the bleachers other than coaches and players. So only three kids in the dugout at a time. So they're spread out. Obviously, when they're in the field, they're already spread out. And then you've got, make the parents kind of spread out as far as sitting either down the fence or around, you know, everywhere, but they're spread out as well. Only one coach is in the dugout at a time, so again, you're limiting how much people around each other. And then when you, I'm trying to think what else we've got, but we only do one umpire. They stand behind the pitcher. So, you know, you don't have that umpire right behind the catcher. We're looking at potentially going to two umpires for some of the older kids, because it's kind of hard to call strikes and balls and outs. But we want to make sure we're protecting everybody as well. We had so many people want to play ball and getting that worked out. And, you know, so that now we're playing, you know, for the county, you got Heath, Reedland, and Lone Oak are all playing ball right now, which is great.
That's good. So there is some activity happening locally. That's good.
And like I said, we put out a great program to, our great plan to get that happening. When we practice, you can only have no more than 10 in the infield and the outfield. So again, you're spread out. So that's been very successful. We make the kids go to two different dugouts when they come to practice. So, you know, if you've got 10 players, first five go to this one, first five go to that one. Again, stay spread out. We're doing everything we can to protect it. No parents on the bleachers. They got to stay spread out during practice. I actually just closed my practices, just told the parents to drop their kids off and come back. So just kind of keep everybody safe.
Awesome. Thank you. Anyone else?
Yeah, I'm just excited that we're working within the framework of whatever that framework looks like. I, you know, I know that, you know, one athlete will bring three or four people with him. So you're talking about the heads in the beds. And a few months ago, to think that, okay, no one's in the stands, what's that going to... Well, we know what that looks like now. And everybody's trying to figure out what we can do within the guidelines that are coming out of the governor's office. And then we're working with them. Football, it's like, are we going to have a football? Yeah, we're going to have it. It's going to look a little bit different preparation-wise, but you guys are doing a great job and I'm glad that, because these kids are bored out of their mind.
Right.
They are. So the Brook State Commission, we have those guys out playing baseball now. And it's the only tune-up they get before college ball starts. So everybody's doing what they can do and I applaud you guys.
Thank you very much. We've got a great team. Commissioners working very hard. Like I said, our team with PFGW is doing a great job. Very blessed from that standpoint. So the leadership's been amazing and everybody's putting the role in and putting the work in. And other than me emailing them all the time, they're handling it pretty well. So I hope I haven't stressed them out too much.
I just thank you for your hard work. We've needed to make this step in a really long time. Really long time. So it's really great to see it moving forward. Thank you.
The good news is that this will be over. We will move forward. And when you guys, hopefully the timing works out really well so that you'll start to see your revenue come up and you'll get to build something. And it'll be time for us to be celebrating that we have that in our community by then.
We had that conversation today. We said, you know, we're moving forward. Luckily, all this stuff that we're doing behind the scenes will eventually come out and hopefully at the same time this is over and once we have this ballpark built, you know, it'll be something we'll be proud of. And that's our goal. I mean, every one of our commissioners from day one said, we're not going to build something that just sits there and gradually gets used. We're going to be something that everybody talks about. We know how uniquely placed we are in our community between St. Louis and Asheville. And being able to bring teams in here, spend the nights can be huge. And, you know, personally, I played, both my kids played travel ball. So it's, you go to a community, you got a couple hours between games, you go eat somewhere. You go, sometimes you go shop. You always forget something if you're spending the night, so then you got to go buy it, you know? So I mean, it's great for the community and it, there's a reason everybody does it. There's a reason it's such a booming driving force for the economy for so many places.
We're going to need it.
Yes. So it's definitely needed and definitely wanted, and that's the good thing about it. So we're excited.
Anyone else? Thank you for coming.
Thank you guys.
Thank you very much.
Take care. Okay, next up, we're going to ask Mr. Backus Oliver from Markham Engineering and Jeff Cantor from PFGW to talk about the City of Paducah building assessment after we get you cleaned up and sanitized. Thank you, Alex, so much.
You're very welcome. Excuse me. Last touch.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. Thank you all very much for allowing us to be service to the city and be here and present the report of our facilities plan survey. I'm here tonight to take you through it a little bit. If you've looked at it, you've seen it's 143 pages. It's a lot of information. So I'm going to show you just seven slides. It takes you through how to extract the information and then also we'll give you a few highlights. Someone must be operating this for me. Thank you very much. So this is the, the survey is completed April 2nd, 2020. Basically, we were hired to prepare the facility survey plan. And this consisted of a walkthrough assessment of all the buildings to determine the needs of the buildings. Then we researched and we prepared estimates of the things that we found needed to be done. And then we prepared a plan on how to try to go about repairing those things or addressing those items that was found. And then we did put it in report form. So this was a culmination of four months of work. Doing the walkthrough is myself from Markham Engineering, and I brought Jeff Cantor with me with Peck, Flaner, and Graham Warren, architects. So between the two of us, we were able to address everything that deals with buildings. The scope of the project was 14 buildings, just over 200,000 square feet of city buildings. So the primary purpose was to determine what was needed so that we didn't have what happened with City Hall to us again. City Hall kind of came on, caught us off guard, and we reacted afterwards. This is to kind of get a forward look and be thinking about what do we need to be looking at next for capital projects or maybe identifying buildings that may need to be transitional. And when we use that term, what we're talking about is buildings that we know we're just about done with. We need to be looking at where we need to go next, build new, or replace, just because everything does age and gets where it can't be repaired. So what I did is I took pages out of the report so that when you look at it later, you can walk your way through this. This is just one of the forms for fire station number one. And I've highlighted with boxes, box number one, basically would identify the category. We reviewed six categories for every building: exterior of the site, exterior of the building, interior of the building, plumbing and fire protection, HVAC, and electrical. Of those six categories, we ranked them and gave them an assessment. Basically, box number two down at the bottom, if you look down there, we identified anything that was non-code compliant, and that's speaking of building code. We identified anything that was missing or never installed in the building. We identified things that are non-functional. And then lastly, we identified items if they were owner-stated or tenant-stated problems in the building. So everything got a score of one through five. That's what you see in box three is the legend. One is an excellent building. One basically says that there's 90% usable life of the building left, and that's pretty much reserved for almost new buildings. Two would be good. Three, average. Four, below average. Five, poor condition. When we talk about five poor condition, we have already now gone the full swing to saying that the building has perhaps 10% life left. So the example you see here, if you can read it well, you could read that the ADA compliance in the interior building, fire station number one, had a non-code compliant, and it was given a score of four. And then in the remarks, you can read more about it. You can always drill down for a lot of information, just how far you want to go. But basically, there were no levers on interior doors and restrooms were non-compliant. Next page. After we identified this in all the buildings, we turned around. We said, okay, what needs does the building have? We identify the needs. Let me page down. There we go. And so what we looked at, what is your most immediate needs, one to three years? And that's identified in box four. Basically, if we identified that, it's a safety item, or it's a building code infraction, or it's an end-of-life cycle situation. We grouped those, and then we grouped everything that's considered long-range is for four years, four through 10. And that's kind of a long ways to look, because you just don't know how it's going to age and what's going to occur over the next five years. But long-range planning were those items that are not emergent, but are things that you need to be perhaps planning for and perhaps thinking about preparing a capital project to address. So in this example, you'll see that items under immediate, A3, A5, and A6, all had to do with the ADA issue. And it was broken down into three items. $1,000 for compliant thresholds, $25,000 assigned to ADA hardware, and $8,000 assigned to restroom finishes and ADA compliances. I'd like to say something about these costs. These costs that we use, we assign a cost to the problem and we do it in what we call order of magnitude. Basically, it is a, it is a good, large, round number to take care of the issue. It has escalation figured in because we don't know when we'll actually get to it. So the other thing I need you to know about these numbers is while they're all relative with each other with respect to all the different buildings, that may not be the true cost when we come to time to do that. And so you always should take time to pause and say, okay, we're now going to address that, and this is year 2021. Let's really look down and drill in and look at what the costs will be. So these, these are basically earmarked so that you can make some decisions with. So after we did all that, we did make a summary for each building. This is what a summary page would look like. This is the summary page for fire station number one. You see the six categories with the bars, basically just giving you a pictorial graph. Those from left to right were 3.3, 3.2, 4.2, 4.3, 4.1, and 3.3. So basically, the story on fire station number one, it's an older facility, but it's being well-maintained, and we are just a little above average. Box number seven is the summary of the assessments that we found. There was nine non-code compliances, there were five missing or never-installed systems. There was one non-functional system, and there was four owner-stated problems. And you can go back in the pages and find what those are. At the very bottom, what we tried to do is we tried to distill this down into data that we can do something with. So in box eight, you'll see that we gave an overall building score. And so the average of those six categories was 3.8. Then we did total the costs for years one through, one through three, $254,000. And then we totaled the costs for years four through 10, just a little over $1 million. Now, if we, by getting those set of data for each building, we're then able to analyze that and look at the entire city facilities in a broader sense. After that, Jeff and I took the information. We looked at what the needs were. We looked at what was emergent. We looked at what was long-range. And we tried to write a facility plan from our perspective. We're an outsider looking in, saying, consider a project to address these things or go in, let's tackle these things, and then let's try to gather these other things into a project that's got synergy and makes sense. And so you will see in the first paragraph, when you read this, that the ADA door actuators, thresholds, and restrooms should be addressed as emergent need. But for example, if you look down at long-range planning, we tell you near the end to develop a capital, mechanical, electrical improvements project. The project would address owner-stated problems, missing systems, non-functional systems, and aging infrastructure, trying to pick up all those things. Finally, we take all this information, and if you put it on one page, you can start to, to tell some things about our 14 buildings that we looked at. This page is useful for planning. It's useful for budgeting, scheduling maintenance. And most importantly, I think it's going to be useful to Chris Yarber's department when they need to go and repair something or look at something. They can look at what is the long-range plan. And most importantly, is this a, a building that needs to be transitional? And that would affect your spending on how you plan to address that. When you just look at the age of the 14 buildings, all 14 buildings are listed there. We did the Ally Morgan Communication Center, City Hall, the five fire stations, the Paducah Recreation Center, Park and Leisure Services Center, police station, probation and parole office, public works office, the public works warehouse, and the Robert Cherry Civic Center. First thing you can just look at on buildings is say, what are their ages? If you study the ages of those buildings, we rate, we age, we range anywhere from 27, which happens to be the Paducah Recreation Center, which we recently got from the Margaret Hanks Presbyterian Church. That's our youngest building, the one that we, we got in that, that arrangement. Our oldest building is the police station, and it's not known for sure, but it's believed to be approximately 85 years old on the original portion of the police station. So we have a great range of years. The four oldest buildings, though, are highlighted for you. Those are City Hall, Fire Station number four, the probation and leisure, the Parks and Leisure Services Center, and the police station. Now, if you move to the second column, if you look at the overall score when we rank the six categories, you see that we range from 3.1 up to 4.4, Fire Station number four being 4.4. Our overall average for all the buildings was 3.5, so just a little bit above average. But it's indicative of we have an older aging building infrastructure. Our five highest buildings are highlighted there in yellow. Those were Fire Station number one, Fire Station number four, Parks and Leisure Services Center, Police Station, and the Robert Cherry Civic Center. If you go to the, next to the last column of information, those are the costs of the emergent needs of years one through three. You'll see that they total $6 million. So it's a very formidable number when you start to talk about 14 buildings. The four greatest as a cost per square foot, basically is put on a unit value that puts on equal footing. But the greatest costs per square foot are highlighted. There's four of them. Those are Fire Station number three, Fire Station number four, Parks and Leisure Services Center, and the police station. Last column being the long-range planning or years four through 10. That column totaled right at $6.6 million. The four greatest costs per square foot were Fire Station number one, Fire Station number two, Fire Station number five, and the police station. A few things you can take just from this, this graph or this presented data is if you just look across at the ones that have the most highlighting, you see that the police station catches our attention, being 85 years old, average score 3.7. It doesn't have a real immediate need, but it's got a large, I'm sorry, it's 800,000 immediate need, $1 million long-range need. Probably the more difficult thing about that building is how do we address the systems and components of it? Why is it doing its function? The building is, is completely full. You all have had to make more space in other buildings. And so when we looked at the building, we tried to tackle how do we update and rejuvenate while in it? It's not a very good, easy solution on that. Another one would be, for example, Fire Station number four had three of them that were highlighted, being 66 years old. It's the, it's the next oldest facility that we own. Score was the highest at 4.4, and the cost being one of the greatest costs per square foot, at 155,000 total. So you could sit and look this data many different ways, take it many different times, from different angles. The point is, it's all there. It's for you to look at. If you want to say, well, I want to look at it from this perspective, then you start referencing the book and going through it and using it more like a dictionary than just trying to read it from front to beginning, from beginning to end. If you do that, you'll do something that only Jeff and I have done. So in conclusion, our buildings are, are well-used, but they're maintained. Our compliments on the maintenance of them. We saw deferred maintenance. Basically, we're now repairing things only when they break, only when it's emergency. We're not trying to be ahead of the ball, ballgame and repairing some things. The newest building being that one that we received from Margaret Hanks Presbyterian Church, I thought that was a revelation. Prior to that, our newest building was much older than that. This document has been presented so that it can help your planning department, your maintenance department, and help you as a commission talk about what things you want to address in your buildings. The immediate need is just as great as your long-range. It's 6 million and 6 million. It's probably the biggest hurdle. What do we do about something that's almost emergent need? Not all of it has to be done. Those are things we've identified and we've earmarked so that we can talk about them intelligently if we want to go into a particular building and discuss what things here do we want to address. I think the most important thing is what you should do with this information is you should try to identify facilities that should be transitional. The data would suggest perhaps Fire Station number four has seen its day and that we should be thinking about how to move out from it, whether we rebuild there or buy something different and make it adapted and move into it. And the data also suggests perhaps the police station should be looked at for the same reason. It's a mission-minded service. It's very busy. It's functioning all the time. I think I was one of the last ones to do a project there, and we tried to put in, we did put in HVAC, but it really felt like we was pushing and hammering it in, working at nights. And it was, I felt very sorry for the police that were working down there during that time. It was hectic. We did get it in. It's bought us some more years, but it's already looking... We did get it in, and it's bought us some more years, but it's already looking, needing to be addressed again. So I think that's important, is that you probably want to take this data and see if you want to identify any of them as being transitional. Once you identify it as that, then you can start planning, what do we need to do to move away from that? I'll be happy to answer any questions. I know there's a lot of things thrown at you. I'm trying to prepare you so you can look at the report.
Beckus, I got a question for you. Thank you for your report. The funds that are recommended to be spent in years one, two, three, they're not included in four through 10. That's in addition to, right? So you're talking really, within 10 years, possibly, potentially, $12 million worth of infrastructure needs. Is that correct?
That's correct. Yep, that's the way to look at that. After we finish years one and through three, we will have to turn around and think about the longer-range plans.
Okay. All right, thanks.
Any other questions? Okay.
Thank you so much for your work on this. Appreciate it a lot.
We hope the information will be valuable. We'll be glad to interpret at any time because you need us to, I'm pretty sure. So feel free to reach out to me when you want to discuss it in detail.
That's great. Thank you, guys. Appreciate it.
Hey, Rick, did we get them a copy yet?
No, we'll make those available. I didn't know who may want one. We could also have it online as well, for those of you who want to look at it online or if you want something. Hard copy, if you put notes in, we can do that, too. Just let us know.
What's the preference of the board? How many pages is it?
Hard copy.
Yeah, can we do hard copy and online?
Many.
So the community can see it?
151 pages.
Let's do both things.
Is there a summary?
There's an executive summary in it, yeah.
I can just provide.
I'd like to have a copy of the executive summary. I don't want all 150-something pages.
So you'll get to stop at page five.
Sounds like something.
You should try to read the first six pages. It's actually paragraphs, and we write, and we can geol the information. So try to read that.
We will put this on the website, then.
Yeah, we can do that.
Okay.
It's very well done. Thank you.
Thank you, guys, so much.
And hey, Beckus, I did read it all, from the beginning to the end.
Congratulations.
One of three now.
Okay, I just want to remind anyone that's out there in the audience that wants to make public comment tonight, those forms are out in the hall. Is that where they are? There's forms out in the hall. If you want to make a comment tonight, I'm about to actually maybe suspend the order of this meeting so we can bring public comment up first. But if you want to speak tonight, make sure you put a form in that box right there. So I am going to make a motion, if this commission would allow, to suspend the order of the agenda to move public comment up to right now. That way, we can hear from the community before we get into business.
And they have to be related to what's on the agenda.
It does, yep. Same rules apply than before.
And then you have the timer, city clerk.
Any discussion about that motion? Okay, I'm going to ask the city clerk to call roll, please.
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner McElroy?
Aye.
Commissioner Watkins?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Harless?
Aye.
Okay, we don't have virtual comments tonight. I don't think anyone signed up for that. And then, is Alex going to stick around to help us?
Yes, she will.
With cleaning? Okay, good. So is she, did she already do that?
Yes, she did.
Okay, thank you. All right, first up, we have Matt Baker. And just to remind everyone, we're sticking with the agenda items, and then we have three minutes on when you get up to the podium. We haven't done this in a while, man.
No, we haven't. No, we haven't. Well, good afternoon, good evening. You know, sun stays up, so days are a little bit longer. Hello, fellow citizens. You know, as in my, three times before, I asked you to pause on the aquatic center and pray about it. Then God sent a rain. We got an aquatic center on any road we wanted to go to. Then we continued to do it, and now we're looking at COVID. And we're looking at a lot of money lost, tax revenue, just all the way around. People are hurting, pockets are hurting, city was hurting, county is hurting before You know, these are new times for everybody, and right now, every penny counts because we don't know what tomorrow brings, you know, and God tells us to labor for today. And if I was to labor for today, I still wouldn't be able to help everybody in this town. And there's a lot of people that need help. There's a lot of situations that need help. And as elected officials, I pray for you and your decisions. I ask for you to pray constantly over your decisions because every decision, whether it be in the city or in the county, has a ripple effect. We can't throw a rock in the pond and expect it to just stop where we want it to. It's going to continue on. For every action, there's a reaction. My life is a prime example of that. But by the grace of God, I keep getting new chances, and I'm thankful for it. So with that being said, and a minute and eight seconds left, you know, I urge, I humbly ask for you to postpone the aquatic center. Allow the revenue, if COVID, God lets it go by, from the ballfields, to replace some of the money that we've lost, by the grace of God, and get our foundation going a little bit better so that we can help everyone involved, and not just the people that want this or want that. Because we all know, life ain't Burger King. We can't have it our way, you know? So I urge you to please pray and look cautiously at everything that we have because now that everybody's pointing fingers at Hong Kong, you know, if we cut off everything with that, people aren't going to be getting Amazon. We're going to have to rely on what we have here. And what we have here is each other, and we need to take care of each other. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
He may have stepped downstairs to help someone.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
I'm going to bring that by myself.
Can't be too careful. Plus, we have to watch her do that. Thank you, Alex.
Hey.
All right, next up, we have Mr. Ron Ward of Paducah.
Well, evening, Mayor and City Council. It's been a while since I came down here. Been coming down here since, what, 2014, Sandra? Was the first time I came down here on the Paducah power deal. Do you remember that?
I remember the first time I met you.
And I've been coming down here ever since, but, and I agree with Matt there on the storming pool project. I think the best thing to do is pause that thing and refocus and see what's going to happen in the next few months. We're in a situation where either we're going to break this virus or it's going to get worse. And the way the trends are going, every time somebody reopens, it gets worse. So I mean, I don't know what the situation is. You're just going to have to watch every dollar you take in. So I mean, that's about all I've got to say about that. And then the only other thing is, adios, I'm leaving Paducah. So this will be the last time y'all get to see me again. So I just say, good luck on whoever's going to be running the city in the future, and I hope it all works out well. Thank you.
Thank you, Ron. All right, next up, we have Ms. Gray.
Want to thank the commissioners for giving me this time. I have really appreciate the fact that you all put your time in. It really is hard work. I know they spent hours and hours doing this. But I also know that the city needs not so much an aquatic center, because I can tell you, I've moved recently from on zip code 42001 to 42003. And the last rainstorm where I lived, cars come by and waves of water came up into my yard. We need to really look at the structure, what I call the drainage system in our city. There's so much going on in 42003 that needs your attention. And I sincerely need you to look at, get out of your houses and get on your car and drive down some of these streets. You could have swam in the street across from where my house is. You need to look at the needs of the 42003. I know that the money is somewhere else besides that zip code, but they really do need your help. And I'm begging you to consider the people in that zip code. They need decent streets. They don't need their houses flooded. They don't need waves of water coming into their yards. So the remaining time that I have left, I just want you to consider this. Get out of your houses when a rainstorm comes down and drenches and drive down these streets. You will find out you need to do something. It's a real need. But I want to thank you, for each one of you, for running for your offices. I know some of you didn't make it, but that's all right. You've got a future in something else. And I thank you very much for what you've done.
Thank you, Ms. Gray. All right, that concludes our public comment for the evening, and we're going to move into the items on the consent agenda. Items on this agenda are to be considered to be routine by the Board of Commissioners and will be enacted by one motion and one vote. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a board member requests. Does anyone have anything they'd like to remove tonight for discussion separately? All right, if not, I'm going to ask the city clerk to read the items recommended for approval, please.
Approve minutes for the June 24, 2020, and July 7, 2020 meetings of the Board of Commissioners of the City of Paducah. Receive and file documents, personnel actions, a municipal order authorizing the mayor to execute a declaration of trust and trust participation agreement with the Kentucky League of Cities Insurance Services for the Workers' Compensation Trust. A municipal order authorizing the mayor to execute a trust participation agreement for the Kentucky League of Cities Insurance Services General Insurance Trust. A municipal order authorizing the mayor to execute an application for a 2020 matching insurance services safety grant in the amount of $3,000 through the Kentucky League of Cities for reimbursement for personal protective equipment for the fire department, accepting any grant funds awarded by KLCIS, and authorizing the mayor to execute all documents related to same. A municipal order accepting matching grant funds through the Kentucky Division of Waste Management for a 2020 through 2021 household hazardous waste grant for funding for the annual city-county cleanup day and authorizing the mayor to execute the grant agreement. A municipal order accepting the bid of Data Records Management Services Incorporated in an amount of $33,529 for digitization services for felony case files for the Paducah Police Department, and authorizing the mayor to execute all documents related to same. A municipal order accepting a 2020 national endowment for the arts artworks grant in the amount of $10,000 for the development and implementation of a creative entrepreneurship program, and authorizing the mayor to execute any and all documents related to the grant. A municipal order authorizing the mayor to execute a contract with West Kentucky Community and Technical College and Paducah Junior College Incorporated in the amount of $85,000 for the operation of public and government access channels. A municipal order accepting the donation of real property located at 2011 Guthrie Avenue from Ronnie Adams and Deborah Adams to the City of Paducah, and authorizing the mayor to execute the deed consideration certificate. A municipal order accepting the bid of Kenny Machinery in an amount of $32,861.98 for the purchase of a New Greens mower and accepting the bid of ERB Turf Equipment Incorporated in an amount of $43,900 for the purchase of a new rough mower for use by Paxton Park Golf Course, and authorizing the mayor to execute contracts per same. A municipal order authorizing the City of Paducah to apply for a state and local government financial wellness grant in an amount of $17,250 for financial wellness classes for city employees, and authorizing the mayor to execute all documents related to same. A municipal order of the City of Paducah, Kentucky, authorizing the mayor to execute the deed consideration certificate for the transfer of portions of existing parcels of property located at 5802 Commerce Drive and 3924 Maxon Road, Paducah, Kentucky, by the City of Paducah, acting on behalf of the Commissioners of Waterworks, DBA, Paducah Water. Municipal order authorizing and directing the finance director to call the Series 2011 general obligation bond and to retire the debt service related to said bond issue in an amount of $1,274,827.64, and authorizing the execution of all documents related to same.
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner McElroy?
Aye.
Commissioner Watkins?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Harless?
Aye.
There's a lot to celebrate there, but I really want to celebrate the retirement of that debt.
Yes.
That is always a good thing. Very exciting. All right, Commissioner Abraham?
I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt a municipal order entitled, a municipal order authorizing the finance director to make payment to Western Surety Company in regards to the pump station number two rehabilitation project in lieu of payments directly to Huffman Construction LLC, and authorizing the mayor to execute all documents related to same.
Second.
Thank you. Mr. Murphy's on his way up here.
Madam Mayor, Commission, as a result of terminating the contract with Huffman Construction on Pump Station Two, we still have bills to pay that we will be making payment to their surety company and people that are still engaged in the project. And it is our anticipation that when we open the bids, that all of those people who are previously engaged as subcontractors will continue to be engaged so we don't lose ground there. But they do have, like, stored materials that they need to be paid for. We'll have to pay them directly for that, and then that will be counted toward our match on the project. So it's just some, I guess, doing a little cleanup.
Any questions for Mr. Murphy? No? All right, thank you.
Mayor Harless?
Yes. Oh, sorry, Mr. Murphy.
No, 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 no.
Oh, okay, okay. Never mind, it wasn't about you.
Prior to this next item, I'd like to present this to the clerk. These are names on the petition, not for this project, the aquatic center, so I want to make this part of the record.
Okay, we need to, can we call roll first on the municipal order?
Sure.
Okay. Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner McElroy?
Aye.
Commissioner Watkins?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Harless?
Aye. Okay.
Yes. So how do we do this? Do we do the?
I think you can pass it around.
Sneak it around you.
Yeah, there we go. Thank you. All right, Commissioner McElroy?
Yes. I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt a municipal order entitled, a municipal order directing the city manager to continue the suspension of the agreement with Los and Associates and Company Incorporated for professional design and construction management services for an indoor recreation and aquatics facility until January of 2021.
Second. Second. Thank you. All right, discussion on this item?
Do we want to go ahead and discuss the municipal order that this amendment is going for, or are we just going to discuss the amendment?
Well, we have right now on the table the municipal order. We do know that there is a proposed amendment from Commissioner McElroy. So if we want to have the discussion about what's on the table right now, we can, or we can bring forward the amendment. I think we could bring forward the amendment and still have a discussion about both things. So I might as well do that.
Is that legal?
Yeah, that might be a better way to do that. And then we can make a discussion. So just everyone be clear, when Commissioner McElroy votes on her, proposes her amendment, we will be voting on the amendment, correct? Okay, thank you. All right.
Okay. I move that the Board of Commissioners amend the municipal order entitled, a municipal order directing the city manager to continue the suspension of the agreement with Los and Associates for of the agreement with Losen Associates for professional design and construction management service for an indoor and aquatics facility until January 21, 2021, to add language directing the city manager to continue due diligence related to the project. Due diligence should include the following. The creation of a conceptual build-out for prospective tenants, the creation of community focus groups for the project with an emphasis on inclusion and programming, research on financial assistance and facility naming rights, research on facility costs with an emphasis on understanding the impact of COVID-19 on the project pro forma. Expenditures related to the above referenced due diligence shall be done within the limits of the city's small purchase plan and within the city manager's procurement restrictions unless otherwise authorized by the Board of Commissioners.
Second.
Okay. Anyone want to go first? Comments?
I'll jump in.
Okay.
All right. This is a project that I think is important to our city, but I also understand the need to pause it. When I ran for city commission, I ran on several things. Two of them were growing our community and providing better athletic facilities for all of our citizens. I've lived here 31 years, raised four kids and knew we were deficit in those areas. Before I go any further, I want to say that every commissioner up here I have great respect for. Every commissioner up here loves their community and would not do anything to try to hurt Paducah. Everybody up here wants to grow this community. That doesn't mean we all agree, but I think we have mutual respect for each other and I really appreciate that. And it has been an enriching experience. Sometimes we learn the most when we disagree and we try to find common ground and we learn from one another. So we're not going to all agree, but we should be able to discuss and express our thoughts and opinions with respect and kindness for one another. And the amount of hatred, sarcasm, arrogance and attack on people's character during the discussion of this project, especially on Facebook, has been so disappointing. The most disappointing thing during my term of service. I applaud those who commented tonight. You did it with grace, kindness and respect. I appreciate that. I've had many, many people stop and tell me they support this project, but they would never speak up publicly on Facebook because they're afraid of being attacked. And I think that's sad. Let me plead for you, plead with us all for our own sakes to be kind to one another. If you're a Christian, and when I talk about a Christian, I'm not talking about a set of behaviors. I'm talking about a follower of Jesus Christ, trusting in the virgin birth, the perfect life lived, the sacrificial death and resurrection of our Lord Jesus Christ. You're called to follow two things, to love God first with all your heart, soul and mind and your neighbor as yourself. I fall short on this every day and I spend the first moments of my day asking for forgiveness. I think that's a good way to start. But it's my great desire for us as a community to show more respect and kindness for one another. I think that will take us a long way. And when it comes down to it, that's the most important thing. Paul says in 1 Corinthians that if we don't have love, we're just a gang, a clanging gong. And I don't want to be that kind of gong. So another thing that perplexes me through this whole situation is the negative bias by our local, local media. They build this as a rich person's center and that's so, so far from the truth. We do have many people of means that are very hardworking and anxious to support with not only large donations, but large amounts of time. Something that they think is important for not just their own family, but for their community and they want to see it successful. We also have a community partner that's very interested in renting space. We also have an insurance company that's interested in perhaps even naming rights, such as what's happening in Louisville right now. This is a center for everyone and don't we all really need places to be together right now? Together? I think we do. About this project, I think it's important to make decisions that are going to help our community grow. I've said many times, I appreciate our strong arts community and what we have here is amazing. The Forest River Center is, was a community project that it took so many of us coming together to do and I'm so thankful for it. But we've lagged way behind in athletic and wellness facilities for our citizens. Working with the county, we're now on the road to baseball fields, softball fields, soccer fields, basketball and volleyball, which we heard from the commission tonight and I'm thankful for that. This facility would add top-notch swimming facilities, a huge indoor walking track, a gym and so much more. Now, to be clear, I'm not a swimmer and none of my kids were swimmers. Frankly, they didn't really have the opportunity to be swimmers because we didn't have anything for them here. But I'm interested in all of our children having an opportunity to practice their sport in a good facility. I'm anxious for all of our kids learning how to swim. It's a life-saving skill. Right now, the Parks Department can only offer classes in the summer and they fill up very quickly. I've missed them when I had my kids because I was late to the signup. Thirty percent of the membership for these centers typically come from senior adults and with thriving programs that we already have, I'm confident that it would be well-used and many would benefit. And yes, it would be great to have a swim team or maybe multiple swim teams as customers, hosting big events that would bring people in again and boost our economy. In the economic times that we find ourselves, I wonder if more people are going to be looking for smaller communities to live. Almost every day, my husband says Paducah needs to put big billboards up in big cities and say, hey, come live with us. We're safe. We have little virus. We have high-speed internet. We have affordable housing. Come on! I think we need to be looking at things that are going to make people want to move here. You know, more people are learning that they can work from home. Are we taking the steps to plan for and develop the amenities that will attract them? Looking around, look around at growing committees, growing communities and see what you'll find. I have and I think we're behind. We've got to look to the future. We have said no in the past to possibilities that would have put us in a much better, better position today, such as having the main, main campus for Murray Camp, Murray State University right here in Paducah. We said no to that. And if we'd have said yes, we wouldn't even be having this discussion because we'd already have these facilities here. Is that going to continue to be our legacy? I recognize, I recognize that there are many people who want Paducah to stay like it is, but I contend with you, that's not possible. We either work hard to grow or we continue on a path of decline in the health of our community. Yes, we could take the bond money and we could spend it on a long list of infrastructure needs. We all have those lists just rolling in our minds. But that $20 million only barely gets us started. It doesn't really touch all that needs to be done. We have hundreds of thousands of dollars of projects that need to be done. So after you spend that money, where do you go? I don't think you can tax yourself enough to meet those needs. I wouldn't want to do that. I'd much rather do, see us do things that pose our city for growth, increase our tax base and then take our community, then take our care of our community needs for the long haul. A Paducah Sun article in 2002 reported the commission's discussion and support of this project. Are we going to continue to just talk about something that was been so badly needed for, from our community for a long time? So my vote is to pause the project due to the continued crisis with our local economy as a result of the virus at this time. But I think we need to continue to develop those community partners. We need to make the wellness centers successful, allowing them to meet with that design team and see if it would work for them. Continue to assess the needs of our individual citizens and educate them about the benefits of this and continue to raise private funds through benevolent work of Friends of the Park. And if the next commission wants to kill it, it'll be on their watch. So if you're in favor of this project, I encourage you to fill the inboxes of those running for office. So I'm going to be filling some of yours. And find out where they stand on this project. And if they don't support this project, what ideas do they have to improve the health and wellness of our community? What do they plan to do to help our community to grow? And to bring in businesses and families that are going to improve our tax base so we can take care of our infrastructure needs? So that's why I brought this amendment. I think we do need to pause spending the big dollars of design because it is expensive and we are not out of an economic crisis at all, or a health crisis. But we can continue to court those partners that have already expressed interest. We can raise money and we can present a good plan to the next commission and let it be on their watch. And I'll be sending emails to all those running for office as well. Thank you for my lengthy comments. I'm on my last six months, so I'm going to say a lot.
Appreciate that.
Thank you for listening.
That was well-written. Anyone else have any comments?
I don't think I could top that. Thank you for, thank you for your comments. Thank you for your passion and for your leadership.
Mr. Watkins, Commissioner Abraham? They're staring at each other.
Thank you. Appreciate that speech, Commissioner McElroy. That was great. And, and you're right on this community has got to grow. We've lost a third of our population since 1960, over 10,000 people. And we, we, we've got so many things going for us. Interstate, river, air, climate, location. We just haven't gotten out and worked to bring those jobs in that other communities are getting. Many in Kentucky that are just beating our socks off, Hopkinsville, Owensboro, Elizabethtown and on and on we can go. The difference is they have aggressive leadership, whereas we have said no too many times. We never made the effort. We didn't want to grow. It was one, the biggest negative. And the, and the second is a lack of recreational facilities. You have to have things for people to do or they're not going to come to your community. And, and recreation is a big part of that. And if you look at these communities that are growing, you will find in most all of them a first-class recreational facility that's widely used and that's one of the draws. That's one of the reasons that employers are choosing to locate there is because of these recreational opportunities. And we've always lacked that in Paducah. Our facilities are poor and no one wants to come and have tournaments in Paducah, whether it's soccer, baseball, softball or swimming because of our lack of facilities. And so we, we need to do something in that area. And for many years I have supported that with my emphasis on improving, adding to the number of baseball, softball and soccer fields as the highest priority. And I agreed to support a swimming pool, a competition swimming pool for about $6 million initially because of the lack of adequate facilities here that was brought to my attention by a lot of different people. And the fact that many swimming tournaments will bring three to 500 people into a community. And that's a lot of tourism dollars. It's a multi-million tourism recreational industry. And we need to try to take advantage of that. I've long supported an indoor ice skating rink. It's, no one was interested. We did it outdoor for two and a half months and had 14,000 ice skaters in two and a half months and 5,000 parents watching them. But the outdoor went by the wayside and I don't guess there's any opportunity we'll ever have an indoor. I know we have to look at the money and whether it will be something that will be self-sustaining as much as possible. Although government doesn't by design do things to earn a profit, we provide services. And, and they cost, but we have to be responsible in those services that we do offer and, and the costs that are bestowed upon all of us, the community, to support them. They have to be important, essential and have a reason for. And a reason for recreation is our health, one. Two, to let young people find their talents and develop their skills that will last a lifetime and lead to careers. We've got a number of professional athletes that have come out of Paducah and Western, McCracken County in Western Kentucky. And then also important, equally of importance, is bringing in employers. But because of the pandemic and the negative impact on revenues, one reason, another reason is there has been some controversy created about the facility. And so I think the people should have a voice in determining whether we move forward or not. So for many weeks now, I've supported, let's put it on pause until January 1 with a new commission comes in and let them make the decision. There's eight candidates running for the commission and two for mayor. And there are various opinions out there about what to do. And so I think let's let the people have their voice and make that decision in November. And then let the new commission, when they take office with the guidance from the voters, which they will see in November, and the economic condition as far as money available in comparison to the other needs that we need. I know we need money for flood mitigation. I know, as we just saw, we need infrastructure money. But we also need money for recreational opportunities to bring in jobs that help sustain the entire community and our ability to pay for all the things and the services that we do provide. So I've, for a number of weeks, supported putting it on pause and letting the next commission, as a matter of fairness, let the voters have their voice. And because of the reduced revenues caused by the pandemic, let's put it on pause until then. But I, I do support your amendment, Commissioner McElroy, because I think the, at least we can do is provide the next commission with some data that will help them make a decision and that information will be collected by the city manager's office. So I think I, I can go along with that. So I will support the amendment.
Thank you, Commissioner. Mr. Abraham?
Thank you, Mayor. Commissioner McElroy, I appreciate your, your service and your passion. And you're right, we're all here trying to do the best job we can do for the city that we say that we love. And I believe we all do, we all actually love the city that we live in. A couple of things. I, first of all, I, I support the pause. I do not support the amendment. Couple of reasons. One, if we're going to spend time, well, let me back up. When we talk about our, our citizens and what they, and what they want, a couple of things that's happened. One, the citizenry showed up here in chambers to voice their concern about the proposed project. You mentioned Facebook. You know, Facebook, that can be a beast. You know, that's, that's pretty much an opinion page and, and that's why I don't, I don't get on it much. But usually when you, the night that we had our, a meeting here and all of the folks that, that wanted to speak, I'm assuming got a chance to speak on how they felt about this, this project. Meanwhile, the infrastructure that the city has, it's old, it's expensive. We spent $1.5 million for a very knowledgeable group to come in and do a comprehensive stormwater study showing us in the area where those low-line areas are and, and different ways to address it. It is. When you start digging up pipes underground, that's very, very expensive. The other thing I want to talk about is we, you hear a lot about, you know, we need this facility so we can attract jobs. Mr. Wilcox over at GPEDC comes in periodically and he talks about buildings and we talked about potential employers that we have lined up. We made their shortlist. And I'll never forget one, one evening, he came back in executive session and he had a, he had a sheet of the top 10 reasons companies locate in your, in your city. Nowhere on there was anything about athletic centers, quality centers. It was, it was, it was jobs and the ability for the workforce to do the jobs. It was low taxes. It was things of that nature. So I, I guess sometimes if you hear things long enough, you just assume that's, that's the way it is. If that was a driving factor, the partner that we pay a lot of money for to come, that would be on that list. I haven't seen it. As far as providing situations where our citizens can be fit and get out and exercise, they're there. Their tax dollars continually is evolving through the Greenway Trail. I know just because you're building a facility doesn't necessarily mean you're going to get that person off the couch. So it's not a necessary. So, it's not a necessary situation where if you build it, they will come. So, the funds that we have for the aquatic center, the bond money that we have, can be used for, that was scary, can be used for infrastructure. And I think every time it comes down like it did about a week ago, it reminds us, if we're going to do some research on what we need to do to shore up our infrastructure, then we need to spend the time doing that, in my opinion, and not spend that time trying to figure out how we're going to pay for an aquatic center. So, with all due respect, and I respect you greatly.
I understand that.
I am not in support of the amendment, but I am in support of pausing it to 2021.
Thank you, Commissioner. Anyone else?
You know, we've talked about doing, we can do more than one thing at a time. So, I don't believe that this is, would be a full-time study for Jim. It's just that if we have a tenant that is interested in looking at it, that I think that we owe that company the opportunity to have that discussion. And if there are potential partners, you know, I mentioned something that had happened in February the other day, and someone looked at me and said, "No one remembers what happened in February." And so, I do think, you know, we got stopped. And so, there are some conversations to continue. And so, this just, I support the pause. This just allows us to have, if there are conversations to be had with Lowe's Design, it would allow for that to happen.
Thank you. All right, I think we're ready to call roll on this one, unless anyone has anything to add.
Which are we voting on?
Right now, we're voting on just the amendment.
The amendment.
Okay.
Yeah, it'll be the order as amended will be what we'll be voting on, as proposed.
Yes, as proposed.
Yeah, okay. And we will not take a vote on the original order.
No, we will just adopt as amended if the amendment passes.
If it passes.
Okay, got it. Everyone okay with that? All right, roll call, please.
Commissioner Abraham?
No.
Commissioner McElroy?
Yes.
Commissioner Watkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Wilson?
Yes.
Mayor Harless?
Yes.
All right, we're going to move on. Commissioner Watkins?
I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt a municipal order entitled, "A Municipal Order Amending the City's Strategic Plan and Adopting the Strategic Plan Action Steps for the City of Paducah."
Can I go second?
Second.
Thank you.
We've forgotten how to do that.
Yeah, we have. Hello.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. This is the 2020 strategic plan that represents the priorities discussed during the retreat in January, slightly tweaked due to some of the budget discussions that we've had. You'll also notice that there's two new areas, continuous improvement and what's important later action items. We also have the continued what's important now priority, high, medium, and low. And so, the proposal is to adopt this tonight, and then we'll have quarterly reporting on all of those items, basically one in October and then one towards the end of the year in January.
Thank you. Any questions for Michelle? Nope, all right. Thank you very much. All right, roll call, please.
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner McElroy?
Aye.
Commissioner Watkins?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Harless?
Aye.
And Commissioner Wilson?
I move that the Board of Commissioners introduce an ordinance entitled, "An Ordinance Approving the Final Report of the Paducah Planning Commission on the Proposed Zone Change for Property Located at 5802 Commerce Drive from R1 Low Density Residential Zone to M1 Light Industrial Zone." This ordinance is summarized as follows, "Rezone property located at 5802 Commerce Drive from R1 Low Density Residential Zone to M1 Light Industrial Zone Classification, and amending the Paducah ordinance to effect such rezoning."
Second.
Thank you. I think Ms. Tracy is on the computer. If we can get her to work.
Am I up there?
Yes.
You're little, but you're up there.
There you are.
She is. Good evening, Madam Mayor and members of the commission. I am very pleased to present to you tonight this rezoning request for a remnant piece of Industrial Park West, which was annexed into the city in October of 2002. This remnant 10-plus acre site is located behind the lots along Commerce Drive and behind the lots along Maxon Road. It's in between them. And while Industrial Park West was promptly rezoned to the MU1 classification, this back piece, this little sliver here, retained the R1 zoning designation. Fast forward to today, and Paducah Water has found this sliver to use for their new 1 million gallon water storage tank to serve the K Row Water District area, which currently is experiencing low water pressure issues, which, as you all know, is very critical to our industrial attractiveness. So, hit. These remnant parcels that are located behind the lots are great locations for critical infrastructure, such as water supply. And so, it is a great fit. And to further that, the comprehensive plan actually recommendation to you to change the zoning classification to the M1 district. And I'd be happy to answer any questions if you have any.
It finally caught up to you.
That's weird.
It was a little lagging.
About 10 seconds.
That was good. We got it all, though.
We got it. We got the idea.
Any questions for Ms. Tracy tonight?
Remind me of the old Kung-Fu movies.
Yes, it did. Yes, it did.
Seventies where the translation didn't match the mouth.
Meanwhile, it's a great project. I think that it's going to help a lot of people, so that's great. Thank you.
Yep, speaking of infrastructure. It's a good project for infrastructure. That's great. Thank you so much. All right, next up on the agenda, we have Commissioner Abraham.
I move that the Board of Commissioners introduce an ordinance entitled, "An Ordinance Approving Change Order Number One with Jim Smith Contracting Company LLC," in order to extend the contract and include the contract pricing for pavement markings. This ordinance is summarize, no, I'm sorry. This ordinance authorizes the mayor to execute change order number one with Jim Smith Contracting Company LLC and to extend the contract to December 31, 2020, and include contract pricing for pavement markings for the City of Paducah Resurfacing Program in accordance with the price list in the change order.
Second.
Madam Mayor, Commissioners, city managers, this actually just makes us a little bit more efficient. If we put the striping contract with Jim Smith, they can get the striping done immediately following the pavement itself. When we do it, our response time is not as well in the coordination. It just makes everything a lot easier for that. And there's no price increase. The price that we were paying is the same price we're going to be paying with Jim Smith. So, that just makes us much more efficient.
Any questions, Mr. Murphy? No, thank you. Okay, Commissioner McElroy.
There's my buddy John Hodges out there.
Is he here tonight?
Yeah, he's there.
All right.
I move that the Board of Commissioners introduce an ordinance entitled, "An Ordinance Authorizing and Approving the Transfer of Municipally-Owned Real Estate Properties Located Throughout Paducah, McCracken County, Kentucky to the Paducah-McCracken County Joint Sewer Agency pursuant to the Provisions of City Ordinance Number 98-8-5927, Establishing the Agency Within Paducah." In this ordinance, the City of Paducah authorizes the transfer of city-owned real estate, real properties located at various locations throughout McCracken County, Kentucky, to Paducah-McCracken County Joint Sewer Agency pursuant to the provisions of the city's ordinance establishing the agency. This ordinance further authorizes the mayor of Paducah, Kentucky, to execute and deliver a general warranty deed of conveyance of the real properties.
Second.
Hello.
Hello. Really, just a cleanup item for when the agency was formed. The form of the ordinance is dictated that the properties related to pump stations and the treatment plant would actually be conveyed by deed, both in the county and in the city. The stuff was done for the county, but it was not done for the city. And I think it has something to do with a water leak or something that happened around the time where they were trying to process all that paperwork, because a lot of the stuff in my office is wet or shows that it was wet. So, I'm not sure what happened. I talked with Lisa Emmons and whatnot. But I'd like to just go ahead and get that cleaned up, obviously, and get the property finally transferred over. So, really, there's nothing in the deed that is property not related to something that we already have something on, pump station or the treatment plant or whatnot. Once we do this, we're going to do a little bit of alley cleanup and stuff like that. So, you'll see a couple plaits from me from around the treatment plant. We own really everything across the street. We own most of the property in Paducah, but these four or five just didn't get conveyed for some reasons. That's all we're doing.
Great. Any questions? Good to see you.
Good to see you.
Thanks for coming.
And we're down at the sewers. We're more immune to some of this stuff.
Oh, my. For different reasons, different diseases. I really wish I had a tomato, because I would throw it at you right now. That's true. I could curve, I could curve it. That's awesome. Well, thanks for being here, John.
Thanks, John.
Okay, comments from the city manager tonight?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. It's kind of hard to follow that up.
Right.
I do want to recognize, where's she at? She stepped out.
There she is.
There she is. I would recognize Michelle for the award that she won. I think that's nice. Have Lindsey Parrish give me the paper for that, because I can't remember what this award's called. It's such a long name. But in essence, what it is, it's the International City Manager Association Award. So, basically, every year, they recognize the Assistant City Manager of the Year, you know, for the world, and we have her in Paducah. That's a big deal. And unfortunately for Michelle, you know, she'd be recognized at this huge humongous banquet dinner, you know, all the glitz and glamour, that type of thing, in Toronto this year. But they went all virtual.
New dress and whole wear. So, in your yoga pants from your home.
Yeah, so, you know, it's amazing thing to win this award. And I'm hoping, Michelle, that next year, they'll be able to catch you again at the international conference, wherever it is. I can't recall where it's going to be, but I'm hoping they'll be able to do two and one, and you'll get your night of glory, if you will. But congratulations.
Absolutely. Thank you for your service.
That's, you know, you consider how many municipalities there are in the United States and worldwide to be the top Assistant City Manager. That's an incredible honor. Congratulations.
Absolutely.
I was just wondering, Jim, has she asked you to swap offices with her?
Right. She has you in a window view, I feel like.
Right, right, yeah. So, noteworthy, that's for sure, yes.
I would just say that my first real experience with city government was the Citizens Academy, and Michelle represents our city so well. She loves Paducah, she loves her job, she loves the people she works with, and she makes you even more proud to be in Paducah. So, when we get to do that again someday, post-COVID, you need to sign up if you haven't done it, because you'll enjoy all the time you spend with her.
You know, because Michelle's only our second Assistant City Manager that we've had in the history of Paducah. The first woman Assistant City Manager we've had in the history of Paducah. And to get this honor is just tremendous. The first in the Commonwealth of Kentucky.
Uh-huh, yeah.
You know, and I think maybe, we have to verify, but I think the southeast region, which is, you know, Georgia, Florida, the Carolinas.
I need a marker.
Just amazing, you know. I can't do enough to say thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
We're very fortunate to have you.
We are. Congratulations.
While I'm giving out thank yous, too, I still have the mic. I want to thank the, I got my list here, can make sure. The Dan from WKCTC and his crew for the magic they've done over the last three and a half months doing the virtual work in this also half-live, half-virtual world. I want to thank the work that the CX crew has done, Alex tonight, you know, with the cleaning and doing those extra steps, Mr. Chino for helping set all this up, Chris Yarber from Public Works and their crew for all the work they did here to keep us safe and healthy. It's just amazing to be able to have the logistics to be able to pull this together and the time it took to get here. I don't know how long we'll be able to meet like this. If things continue to go on with COVID-19 as they're progressing, we might not be here next month. It might be virtual again, but at least we're here now to be able to do this together and be able to conduct government in person, which I think is very important. It's our form of government. It's good to be able to do this in person. And then, of course, the city clerk for all her hard work doing the virtual meetings and organizing all the stuff behind the scenes and reading all those motions, reading the budget motion.
That's the one I was most anxious about.
Yeah, right. She got that for you guys this year.
She got it. Hell, I had it last year.
But then, how about Paxton Park, you know, hosting, allowing us to put the fireworks off, you know, for the celebration. And we're one of the communities in Kentucky that are able to have Independence Day celebration, and Paxton Park allowing us to do that. So, kudos to them, too. So, just throwing out a lot of thank yous and kudos. And thank you for all of you being here tonight, you know, coming out and participating with us. Thank you. And your patience for the changes. Thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you very much. And thank you to you, by the way, because you have led us through some challenging times in the last four months.
Appreciate that.
And I think you would agree with me, and so would Michelle, that we've done so many changes so rapidly, but I know you've demonstrated grace and patience also with the team. And thank you so much for keeping us safe and keeping it. I love when you say, "The services matter the most," and that's what you want to make sure no one saw a change in. And I think that's true. I don't think we saw a beat get skipped when it came to the basic services of city government. So, thank you.
Thank you.
He does deserve that. I agree.
You're making me blush now.
I'm bringing my marker next time. I was going to keep ticking them all off, all the accolades. Any comments from the commissioners tonight?
Well, I'm going to follow up with that. Thank you to all of our city employees. I mean, I think they've all stepped up during this time. I know it's been challenging, and, you know, you see them out and with masks, and you see them working hard and doing the things that they're supposed to be doing. I know that they've all stepped up and really been helping everyone. And I've called some and said, "Hey, I heard this. Can you help with that?" And everybody's just been so responsive. So, thank you very much to all of the city employees. Thank you.
I just liked the second, what Commissioner Wilson said, too. Your employees are always your greatest resource, and we know that with the City of Paducah. We have the best employees, and they make it fun to come in and work, and they make our job a whole lot easier. And we've got a brilliant cast of hard-working, great people that are very kind, very smart, and just go out of their way to try to meet the needs of the citizens of Paducah and carry out policy that we set forth. So, I'm really proud of all of our city employees.
Here, here.
The, just to tailgate on what you said and what you said, from our Public Works folks out dealing with what they deal with, and everything, the last few months have been so stressful. You can't get out and move around, and then you have the climate of what's going on. And from our employees here to law enforcement, all perform like champs. And you're right, they are our most valuable asset, and we can never say thank you too much. So, they're all well-deserved.
I would force that, whatever we're at, because I'm proud of our employees, and they do work hard, and I appreciate them. I also want to highlight once again our small business loan grant through this process. We got a lovely thank you note from Amy Allen, who owns Harmony Road Music School, what that $2,000 meant to her. Brilliant, Mayor. I know you had worked with the community foundation, city manager, all these people to put that together. But I think this was, this is what held some people on. Hopefully, well, I mean, we've got to have our businesses sustained. We've got to have these jobs. We've got to have these services. And I also appreciate the work to get Market Street shut down for eating. It just looks fun, just to look at it now, and I think that's been helpful to our restaurants and businesses that that could happen. Appreciate that. Thank you very much for working so hard, Parks Department, to get our playgrounds open. Our kids need stuff to do, as Commissioner Abraham said, they're bored. And I think our spray parks hopefully are going to open soon. They'll give them something, especially since we're going to hit 104, 108 heat index. That's really good. I'm super excited that very soon, it's been delayed because of COVID, like the whole world. We all have delay fatigue right now. But our music playground is going to, the installation is going to start very soon on that in Noble Park. That's a beautiful public-private partnership, a lot of private money given to buy beautiful instruments that will be used in our Noble Park, just to enhance that beautiful asset that we have. I'm super, super excited about that. So, be looking for that. I'm looking for the workmen so I can take them cookies. I guess I can't take cookies, can I? Dilly bars? Can I buy dilly bars?
Individual wrapped.
Individually wrapped. Individually wrapped dilly bars.
Or put them in like a bag. Or put them in like a baggie by themselves or something and give them individually.
You have, you have to fix them at the health department, though.
Yeah, in a certified kitchen. It gets complicated, folks.
I have one more thing, Mayor.
Yeah, go ahead.
I was just going to say, you know, even during this time, though, I received a call from Vicksburg, Mississippi. And they, Paducah was identified in a study that their city had as a community that they needed to go visit.
Awesome.
For an inner-city visit. So they still want to come the first week of August. And I've been saying, well, you know, you have to wear a mask. Absolutely. You know, we have to do this. And they're great. But it's 10 people staying in hotel rooms for two nights.
Yay.
The same week Leadership Kentucky is planning to come to Paducah and staying in a local hotel for two nights. So they all know the guidelines from Kentucky. And they're still wanting to come here. And so absolutely, it's great commerce for our city. And I just want to encourage our own local community to support our local businesses. As you've said, it's critical that we keep them in business. If you're ordering out, pickup, if you feel comfortable going in, do, do everything that you can to help our local businesses to stay in business during this time.
Absolutely. Thank you.
I'll be in touch about the Vicksburg business. Some of you want to see them.
That's exciting. I went to Vicksburg during the Delta Regional Authority Leadership Academy. And they have a cool little city, actually. It's on the river. They have a little historic downtown. It's really neat.
But they want to see what we're doing. So that's pretty awesome.
Yep, absolutely. Well, thank you all for your kind words. And I'll just tell you, as I'm listening to you speak in person, which is so much better than virtually on the computer, I'm just reminded that, you know, I think not being able to interact in person is making it a struggle for us to remember that we should love our neighbor and that we do want to care about each other. And when we, when this all started, I'll never forget the feeling that this community came together so quickly. It was without even a second thought that we raised that kind of money for small businesses. And our nonprofits jumped in and said, we're going to go door to door and help our community with the needs that they have. Let's don't forget that that's who our community is. That's what we did. It kind of, as you mentioned, Commissioner McElroy, we get fatigued because every day we wake up and this is still here. And we're still having to wear masks. And we're still having to be thoughtful. But you know what? In the beginning of this, we were choosing to reach out to one another and have real conversations. Let's keep doing that. Let's keep contacting people we care about, contacting our community, and having these discussions. Because just hearing you all speak tonight really reminded me about that humanity piece of this whole experience. And whether you believe it or don't believe it, or agree with it or disagree with it, your words earlier, Commissioner, all about community. We are built for community. We are built to love one another. And so thank you all for reminding me that tonight. I really appreciate your words. And I'm going to move on to the executive session. I think we have a long night. We have a lot to discuss tonight, which means there's business happening in the city. So that's good news. And I'm going to ask Mr. Commissioner Watkins if he'll read the motion, please.
Okay. One last question. I was just wondering, is it really necessary for Alex to spray us down before we leave?
We actually have a chamber for you to have to go in and get sprayed.
No, that's, that's a good point, though, because we're staying, we're staying here at the dais for, for closed session.
Thank you, thank you.
Okay. A proposed motion of the Board of Commissioners to go into closed session for discussion of matters pertaining to the following topics, future sale or acquisition of a specific parcel of real estate as permitted by KRS 6118101B, and a specific proposal by a business entity where public discussion of the subject matter would jeopardize the location, retention, expansion, or upgrading of a business entity as permitted by KRS 61.8101G.
Second. And roll call, please.
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner McElroy?
Aye.
Commissioner Watkins?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Harless?
Aye. All right. Thank you all so much for being here. We're going to kick you out now, unfortunately. And I'm going to take a...